No.
I know.
It's already been. It's like a voice. Exactly. Yep.
Call the meeting to order. Will you please stand for the Pledge of Legits?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, united, peaceful, just as for all.
We have in different face up front here. Tadvi is not at the meetings. We have Ken Bozier, our comptroller up here, if people watching or in the audience are unaware. I'll move on to approval of the minutes. The meeting's held September 23rd and October 2nd. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and second and approval of the minutes for both the meetings held September 23rd and October 2nd. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. I did not see any, nobody wishing to address the school board. I'll move on to approval of the agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second for approval of agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to the good news report.
Good evening. We're happy to bring you two good news reports tonight. First of all, Allison Strzok, Executive Director of the Sioux Falls Public Schools Education Foundation is here to share some information about an event that is coming up that the foundation is planning for November. Also some other great news as well. So please come forward, Allison.
Well, good evening. Thank you for having me. I'm going to share a little bit of information about the Education Foundation to kind of recap our last year. So first off, as you know, one of our grant programs is our first time teacher grants, and we just finished awarding 61 of those. So the foundation gives every first time, first year teacher $200 to use to purchase materials they need to equip their classroom. This year, we were able to surprise all of the teachers at New Teacher Orientation at Lincoln High School. And we got a nice photo, and then we were able to get the grants out to them. And really, that program has been successful because Daughters of the American Revolution have matched all of our donations. So for every $100 we put in, they match it, and that's why we're able to do the $200. The second program that we do, and by far the largest part of what the foundation is, revolves around our Public School Proud Grant Program. And that used to be known as the Innovation in Education Grant Program. We rebranded that last year. We had some staff who were maybe hung up on the word educate or innovation and thought it had to be related to STEM, or maybe their grant wasn't creative enough, or, you know, innovative enough. And so we rebranded to Public School Proud to let people know who we are and what we do. And something that we started last year was Prize Patrol. We, after the grants have been decided, we work with the principals in each of the buildings, and we show up and surprise their teachers during a staff meeting. So the teachers don't get a heads up that we're coming in. We bring in balloon and candy bouquets, and then the actual check to purchase the materials, and we surprise the staff members in front of all of their colleagues and the administrators. Last year, we awarded 22 of those grants, just under $60,000. And when we were at Memorial, we had eight grant winners, and I was trying to fit 40 balloons in my car on a lovely windy South Dakota day. So, but really, there's nothing better than giving a teacher a check and celebrating them in front of their colleagues. We had teachers, you know, cheer up. They were emotional. We had teachers jump out of their chairs and cheer, and it really is the best, the best part of my job. Next, we had a generous donation from the Huthar Family Foundation. They gave us $10,000, and we started a student success fund. So we have given that money to the social workers and the Department of Student Services, and they're able to use that money to help families who are in crisis. So they're purchasing personal hygiene products, laundry detergent, clothing for families who are fleeing domestic violence, emergency food assistance if they don't have access to other, you know, feeding programs, or they lack transportation. And the reason I have the alarm clock is because we know that we have high school students who are responsible for getting their younger siblings up and off to school. And if you don't have a cellphone, you know, we know that attendance matters. And so the social workers did purchase a number of alarm clocks to help our kiddos last year. And part of this $10,000 donation, we are using for GED scholarships, so students who want to take the test but don't have the $130 to pay for it. And really, we moved this way to just give our donors another option. If their heart was, you know, with the student equity piece, we wanted to make sure that they had a way to support the foundation. And next, we have a new event on November 7th. It's going to be called Public School Proud, and we've named it that because the proceeds from that event are going to support our grant program for teachers. And it's going to be from 6:00 to 9:30. I see I have 6:30 to 9:00. It's 6:00 to 9:30, and it's going to be in the lower level of Raven Industries. And it's going to be a student showcase and reverse raffle. So instead of bringing in outside performers, we thought, why don't we showcase the students in the district? So we've invited high schoolers in to perform, and then the CTE Culinary Arts students will be preparing and serving the appetizers and desserts. And on the screen, they have a mango sorbet and French macaroons that they made last week, so we could taste test. Tickets are $100 for this event, and I would encourage all of you to please attend. Please invite your friends. We want to make sure that this is successful. Unfortunately, after we picked our date and booked the venue, we found out about three other events that are happening on the same night. So thank you to all of you who have already purchased your tickets, but please help us, help us promote this because it is for our teachers and our students. And finally, we have a couple of unique partnerships. Right now, we have a promo going on with Graham Automotive Group. If you stop in and test drive any vehicle, you get to designate a $20 gift card to any teacher in the Sioux Falls School District. And Nan was instrumental in getting that partnership, so thank you for that. It goes until the end of the year. We received $2,400 worth of personal hygiene products and care packages that were made by the kiddos and staff at Bright Horizons Early Learning Center last week. I worked with Casey Miley and Molly Satter to set up a partnership with Falls Community Health. If there are students who can't pay for their athletic physical, the foundation will cover that $35 cost so that they can still participate in activities. And then a couple weeks ago, we were at Garfield, Laura B. Anderson, and Terry Redlin installing brand new washers and dryers in the building. So, you know, we know that, that student equity piece is again, part of this. And if kids are coming to school in the same clothes four or five days in a row, the staff, they're going to take care of that in the building. And so this is actually from Wade's building when we were there. And Jeff Kreider and his team, they took care of all of the pre-work. When the installers from Carl's came, they said, wow, they made this really easy for us. So that was Jeff and his team, not me doing, doing any of that. And then lastly, we have a 14-member board. We've added four new board members this year as we've had members term out. And I'm happy to report that we are 97%, or 93% of the way to our fundraising goal for the year. So we're hopeful that after our event, we can say, you know, we've passed that 100% threshold. So, any questions?
Where, if people are watching or in the audience, where could they purchase tickets and so forth to attend the event?
Yep. If they go to our website, sfeducationfoundation.org, they can buy tickets right online. They can also mail checks to the foundation, or they can call me at 367-4484.
And the cost of the ticket includes all the food and beverages for the evening, correct?
Yes. It includes the appetizers and desserts, the entertainment, and then you have a chance to win half of the pot of ticket sales. So in a reverse raffle, we'll be drawing tickets throughout the night, and the last ticket is the lucky winner.
Is it all the macaroons you can eat?
That's where I was going. Where I was going.
Yes, yes.
I'm in.
Also, Allison, I wanted to thank you for organizing the board to bring conference meals to Horace Mann. And a reminder for those out in the community that would like to help provide conference meals at the schools that don't have active PTOs, I know the teachers appreciate that. So thanks.
And you mentioned that the Proud event, there are some other school district events going on. My son has an orchestra concert that night, but we'll just have to go to that and then go to the Proud
Right.
school function. So there's, there are plenty with the time being between 6:00, what did you say?
6:00 and 9:30.
You can stop in any time, right?
Yes, and that's what someone said today. If you're downtown at those three events, you just go from one to the next to the next, and you can support all three programs. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have, as I mentioned, we have two. Jody Miller is here. She's our program manager from the Kids Inc. After School Program. And coming up in a week and a half or so, there's an event that calls attention to the importance of safe, supervised after-school care. So Jody's here to tell us about that.
Well, she's loading my pictures. We're going to talk a little bit about the 2018 study done by Augustiana and the Sioux Falls Thrive Organization. Some of you may have seen this, but it says that children spend only 14% of their time in school, and out of school time programs, including after-school and summer programs, have the potential to increase students' time in structured educational settings by as much as 80% with an additional 1,028 hours on top of the school day. So during these additional hours, OST programs can provide supervision, help ensure student safety, and keep students actively engaged in meaningful activities. And that's what our Kids Inc. program does. We provide after-school and summer care, so there's something for kids to do, but we're not reaching near as many students that we can. And there is the fear that we will have to cut back on that because of lack of staff. We've got some things going right now, trying to hire staff. And one of the special things that we're focusing on in our staff recruitment right now is making a difference in the life of a child. Because our staff have the opportunity, first of all, to provide a safe environment for the kids. And also, one of the most difficult challenges we're finding today, as you are all probably aware, is dealing with our difficult students. And we've found that having to use the district SEM subs that haven't had the training that all of our staff have provided will fill a body and fill our racial requirements each day, but they don't have the training behind them that we do in order to provide the most appropriate discipline methods and developing those relationships with those students so that they can work with them on a more one-to-one basis. And so that's why we're really pushing to try and get away from having to use district subs. And so they're available for the district also. And one of the key things I said was the relationships with families. We have staff that have been site directors in our program for 12 years. And one of those staff people, this is the first year she hasn't had a student from one particular family since she started. So she's watched the entire family grow from kindergarten all the way up to fifth grade, and that's what's neat about our program. And also just developing the relationships, because we see those families every single day. And unfortunately, parents only, or teachers only get to see them several times a year with different events at school. And once we get the staff that we hire, we do everything in our power to make sure that they're appreciated and felt welcome at our schools. We have a lot of recognition programs that we've implemented for our staff. We recognize those that come to work every day. We recognize those when there's a parent compliment, a school principal compliment. We let them know that information, because as you can imagine, everybody being in 22 different locations, it can kind of be disjointed sometime. And it's hard for some of us as administrators to recognize what's going on because we're not always there. So we rely on our site directors. And despite having some of the highest wages in the district or in the area, we're still struggling. We have about 15 to 18 staff openings. I mean, our starting wage for a lead helper, which has to plan approximately one activity per week, is $1,240 an hour. Majority, I even know site directors at childcare centers that are paid $10 to $11 an hour. And our site directors are paid over $18 an hour to start, and they also are eligible for benefits. And if they can pick up an EA position in the district, the cost of their benefits is greatly decreased. And it also is a huge benefit if they can get an EA position in the same school that they're in at night. They become part of the school staff, as well as the Kids Inc. staff. They find out things that we don't find out in after-school, so it's just a great partnership for us to have. But what I was here tonight to talk about is our Lights On After School. The first statewide observation, observance of Lights On After School took place on October 16th, 2010, at Mount Rushmore National Memorial. And I was able to be there for that, and that was a very, very powerful time. We had the president from the National After School Association there. We had the director from the National After School Alliance Program there, and it's the first time that they had ever lit Mount Rushmore after hours for us on that day. And here's some of the pictures you can see in, on the screen there of the different entertainment they had, and you can see Mount Rushmore lit up in the background. And all of that entertainment were kids doing these things in after-school programs. And then this is some of the other locations we've held Lights On After School statewide, the Corn Palace in Mitchell, the Center of the Nation Monument, and also at Tatanka Sculpture. Can I go back? And we do it in a variety of different, sorry, in a variety of different ways. We have everything from parent-child volleyball games to art galleries. And I have some brochures that I'll send home with you tonight that I just highlighted about six or seven of our locations and what their activities for this year would be, and they'd love if you came out and spent some time there. And then this is your reminder. And if there's a school you'd like to visit that's not on here, just call me, and I can let you know what's going on and what day. October 24th is the official 20th anniversary. And I wanted to show you, this is what we did at the Falls last year in October. We lit up the Falls for Lights On After School. So you can visit any of our locations, and they'd love to see you. And I believe that's all I have for you. Thank you. You have any questions?
Thank you, and thank you for all you do. When my boys were at Robert Trust, and I used your services, they were mad the days I would pick them up before, because they loved it so much. And it was such a convenience and ease for me when I was working to not have to transport them after school. So thank you for all your staff and you, what you do at our schools to help the students and families.
Thank you.
We'll move on. No new conflicts to report, correct, Bev? I didn't see anything on that? All right, thank you. We'll move on to approval of the consent agenda, items 8A through G. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor of approval of the consent agenda, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Now, items 9A, approval of claims to Sanford Healthcare System. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor of 9A, approval of claims to Sanford Healthcare System, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries with two abstentions.
Aye, that was a late aye.
Okay. I thought I heard it, sorry. With two abstentions from Board Member Ryder and Board Member Mickelson. 9B, on the consent agenda, a motion to amend the contract 17-088 with Avera E-Care. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor of amending contract 17-088 with Avera E-Care, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries with one abstention from Board Member Parker. Now, items 10A and B.
All right. Well, thank you. We have two reports to give to you tonight. The first report is our Advanced Placement Report, an annual report that speaks directly to some of our priorities in our strategic plan. Here to give that report to you tonight from Curriculum Services is our Coordinator of Secondary Curriculum, Kristin Granager.
Good evening. The Advanced Patient Program is available to all high school students who are interested in college preparatory coursework that is academically rigorous and rich in content. At the conclusion of the course, students who are taking AP courses have the option of taking an AP exam designed by College Board. The test results are reported on a scale of one to five, and students must receive a score of three or higher as a pass rate in order for the college, for the course to be considered for college credit. During the 2000, oh, I'm sorry, here. It has been 10 months. I'm going to let Deanne hassle with that, and I'll keep talking. During the 2018-19 school year, students selected from 18 AP courses in a wide variety of areas. And last year, we also added a new course called AP Seminar, and 26 students enrolled in that during its first year. In 2018-19, 2,695 AP exams were taken by 1,439 students. This is up from the previous year. In the previous year, 2,547 exams were taken by 1,351 students. So that's great growth. Students are encouraged to take at least one AP course during their high school career. AP courses may be taken by students in grades nine through 12. And Chart A shows the number of exams that were taken by ninth, 10th, 11th, and 12th grade students. And over the past four years, you can see those numbers continue to climb. Chart B breaks that information down into the number of students in each grade who have taken AP courses in the past four years. And again, that number continues to grow. It is a goal of the AP District Committee to see an increase in the number of exams taken by minority students. Table 1 shows the number of exams desegregated by race or ethnicity. The numbers have risen in a couple of areas and dropped in a couple or stayed about the same. So this is an area that we will, we are committed to working on improving those numbers. During the 2018-19 school year, 92% of the students enrolled in an AP course took an exam. This is an increase of 1% over the previous year. Chart C shows the number of exams taken in the past four years and the number of exams that scored a three or higher. So of the 2,695 exams taken, 1,882 received a passing score of three or higher. This year, 70% of AP students scored a three or higher. AP students in the Sioux Falls School District continue to score higher than the state and national averages. The pass rate for South Dakota was 69%, and the global pass rate was 60%. Keep in mind that the majority of tests are taken by Sioux Falls School District students as we make up over 54% of the total exams taken. Chart D shows the comparison of the Sioux Falls School District, State of South Dakota, and global AP scores for the past four years. College Board recognizes AP scholars, and this year, we had 424 district AP Scholar Award winners. 179 students received the AP Scholar Award, which means they received a score of three or higher on three or more AP exams. 87 received the AP Scholar Award with honors. Those students had an average of 3.25 or higher on all AP exams and a score of three on four or more exams. 158 received the AP Scholar with distinction. These students had an average score of at least 3.5 on all AP exams taken and scores of three or higher on five or more exams. And we had 45 students receive the AP National Scholar Award. These students have an average score of at least four on all AP exams and scores of four or higher on eight or more AP exams. We have an AP District Committee that meets annually to review the goals and work to promote AP program for all of our students. There is an incentive budget for advanced placement, and the FY19 budget was $118,040. The incentive budget provides $65 per student scoring a three or higher on the exam. It also involves a number of students who are enrolled in AP courses and those passing. Buildings use this money for professional development, classroom materials, and costs associated with administering AP exams. AP exams generally run $93 per test. There are financial aid guidelines established by College Board so that some students are exempt from paying those fees. However, the district will subsidize fees for students who have a financial need but do not meet the qualifying guidelines of College Board and the state. This past year, we had 263 students who qualified for free reduction through College Board. The Advanced Placement Program provides wonderful opportunities for students to engage in college preparatory work. We continue to see the number of students taking AP exams and the pass rate rising in our district, and we continue to surpass the state and global rate. Ask at this time if you have any questions.
Thank you. I had sent you several questions. And one of the things I thought was so interesting is to compare to other districts of our similar size. And you were able to provide that Millard South in Omaha, for example, they provide 23 AP courses, and Lincoln provides 24 AP courses. So I think we're doing a good job of providing students in our district the variety of AP courses, and they have that. And I love that we're increasing the number of students taking it, even though we're also offering dual credit and concurrent credit and other options that might fit that. So we're striving for quality for all of our students.
Yes, that's correct. Our dual credit numbers have risen, but so have our AP. So that's great news for our students. All right, then I would ask the board to acknowledge the AP report. Thank you.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the AP report. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you.
Our second report this evening also comes to us from Curriculum Services. Anne Smith will deliver the report, and it's really a fairly new topic for us to discuss, and that is the Seal of Bilitracy.
Good evening. The Seal of Bilitracy is an award given by a school, district, or state in recognition of students who have studied and attained proficiency in two or more languages by high school graduation. The Seal of Bilitracy movement began in California in 2011, and since then, 36 states and Washington DC have established the criteria for a state seal of bilitracy. The seal is recognized by many colleges and a growing number of employers as a credible verification of language skills that can be used to determine accurate placement in college courses or determine fit for jobs that require advanced language skills in two or more languages. If you notice the map, there are a few states, including South Dakota, that have not established a state seal of bilitracy. Recognizing this, Avant Assessment founded an organization called the Global Seal of Bilitracy. This organization has an independent Board of Advisors that are made up of K-12 and higher education faculty and second language acquisition and assessment researchers from across the country. The organization established standard criteria for the seal of bilitracy so that the seal could be available to all schools, public and private, including schools in states like South Dakota that don't have a state seal. The Seal of Bilitracy that's awarded by the Global Seal of Bilitracy certifies language proficiency in two languages or more at the intermediate, mid, and advanced-low levels on the American Council on the Teaching of Foreign Language Actful Proficiency Scale. of Foreign Language Actful Proficiency Scale. Students who earn the Functional Fluency Award must earn a five or higher on all four parts of this Avant Stamp Assessment, or they can earn a three or four on the AP exam. The higher score, the Working Fluency Score, requires a seven or higher on all four parts of the Avant Assessment, or a five on the Advanced Placement exam. The Seal of Biloteracy also can be awarded to ELL students who show proficiency in English and their primary or first language. In that case, there would be the WIDA requirement to demonstrate that they have earned the proficiency in English. And then, they would have, demonstrate, the WIDA access, the English requirements for graduation, if they didn't have that WIDA access score, plus they would need to show the proficiency in their primary language. So, there would have to be a test showing that proficiency. So, after the AP scores were received this summer, we submitted the qualifying scores and were excited to see that 106 of our students have met the criteria for the Seal of Biloteracy. If you look at the breakdown, there were 95 who earned the award in Spanish and 11 who earned the award in Latin. 61 of those students were seniors. Those are students who have all earned it through the AP exam. And 29 were ninth graders, 16 were 10th graders. Those ninth and 10th graders were all our Spanish immersion students. There were no 11th graders because our Spanish immersion students haven't reached 11th grade yet and because typically, students are not taking that AP language class until they're seniors. If you look at the breakdown in terms of what level were they earning those awards at, we had, these students earned it at the intermediate, that lower level, silver level. There's a silver medal and a gold medal. And again, you'll see 48 were 12th graders. We had 23 ninth graders and five 10th graders. And then, at the higher level, the working fluency level, we had 13 12th graders, six ninth graders, and 11th, 10th graders. So, we were very pleased to see how our students are performing on the Seal of Biloteracy. As far as costs, the cost of the Avant, the Stat Stamp Assessment, it's $25 per student. We do pay for that assessment at the end of the Spanish Language and Culture Class that the students take in high school. The AP exam fee, as Kristin said, she said $93. I said 94 because that's what I found when I looked up the College Board's website. But students who take the AP exam choose to pay that fee, and there is support for students who might have financial difficulties. And if we were going to certify our ELL students, the WIDA access is a test that's required by all, for all ELL students and is paid for by the state of South Dakota. So, basically, the Seal of Biloteracy bears very little cost, and the Global Seal of Biloteracy organization does not charge us for the certificates that they mail. The students will also receive on their transcript a note that they've earned the Seal of Biloteracy. So, they'll have another way of documenting that achievement. With that, I would entertain any questions and ask that they, the report, that you acknowledged the report on the Seal of Biloteracy.
Couple of questions. Would it take legislative action, or is it the State Department of Education that would have to pursue this at the state level?
Yes, and we have had some conversations with Ben Jones. I believe the last conversation that we had, he indicated that he would, that he would be interested in carrying this through regulatory language, possibly not taking it through the legislature. But he is interested in doing something so we could have something at the state level.
Would it then be our own assessment then, instead of using the probably similar baselines?
Right. We would, yeah, South Dakota would establish the criteria. And yes, they'd have to say which assessments would be accepted as evidence.
Thank you for answering some of my other questions, but I thought it was neat that all four of our high schools had a recipient of this. So, even New Tech. And so, it wasn't just Lincoln where the Spanish immersion students are, and Latin's, I think, only at Lincoln.
That's correct.
Correct. So, it was neat to see that. And maybe we'll give some thoughts for the other schools to look into maybe AP French or German or other languages that they would like to.
And I think that's one of the nice things. This seal raises the awareness of the importance of being bilingual or multilingual. And I hope that when we get that word out there, yes, we will have more kids that will decide, I want to, I want to push myself a little harder and see if I can get there.
What's the timeline to get this moved into regulatory language? Is there any?
Do not have one right now.
Just wondering how quickly this might move through, just bearing in mind there's people who have children that will soon graduate and...
Yeah. I don't, that, of course, would be up to Mr. Jones in the Department of Ed, so.
What's neat, though, is that you, my son just received, so you get a certificate still now through this global initiative, through this. So, at least we have a plan until the state does something. So, they are receiving something.
Two avenues.
Exactly.
Oh, good. Thank you for that clarification. Yeah, in some of this, one of the nice things, if the state does pursue a seal and not knowing how South Dakota might choose to set up what we would establish. But for instance, in Minnesota, if you earn the Minnesota State Seal of Biloteracy, you automatically earn college credit at some of the, at the Minnesota State institutions. So, they can do some of those kinds of things. Going through the Global Seal of Biloteracy, students do also have the option of earning credit through the University of Southern New Hampshire. There's a process that they can do that.
I was just going to add to, and correct me if I'm wrong, but if you look at the grid that has the requirements, you've got the functional fluency, which is like a silver, what you said. And then, there's the goal. If a student at some point in their career earns the functional, they can continue working and have a test score that's reflective, or whether it's an AP or a stamp or whatever test, that could move them to the next level. So, they can't just take one test and get a certificate. They can continue to work and have another assessment and be able to move up to that higher level one, too. So, I think that's exciting for students to know that this shows how well they've done, but that they can still move on and put forth that effort to hopefully achieve that next one. So, I'll be very curious. I would love to somehow get employers in our community some information about this so that if a student, whether it's a high school, current high school student, or a graduate, were to come with them, to them with this information, that, you know, they would know what they were talking about and understand the value of it. Because I really do think that as our community becomes more diverse, there will be a lot of people who could really find value in hiring employees that have this fluency level with whatever the language may be. So, thank you very much for that.
Any other questions? Seeing none, do you have a motion to approve the Global Seal of Biloteracy?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries.
Thanks, Anne.
Move on to items 11, policy.
Cater.
Got it.
I got them. We have four policies up for review revision tonight. The first is DFF and its accompanying regulation, sales and disposal of surplus property. We updated language to current practice. DIBA, uncollected accounts receivable, no changes. EFA and its accompanying regulation, supplemental food sales, no changes. And DFI, food services, records, and reports, no changes. So, with that, I would just move to approve the review, review revision of the above policies.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of approving the policies presented signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries.
Motion adjourned?
So moved.
All those in favor have adjourned?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. We are adjourned.
But it's so fun, too.